Okay, now we're officially ready to get started. Call to order, the February meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First item on agenda, roll call.
Yep.
Koleski.
Here.
Chikovitz.
Present.
Bealy.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Berthold.
Present.
You have a form.
Have a form, we're all set, okay? The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was in December. Everybody had a copy of those in their packet? Are there any questions on the minutes?
Yes. I was not here, but I was here as listed as present and I was not here to vote, so I guess I need my name stripped.
Your list is here, but you were not here, so.
That's right.
You're listed as in favor of the motion.
Mm-hmm.
So remove from the... Any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes.
We have support.
I'll support that.
Okay. Questions on the motion? Voice vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved as corrected. New business items, first we have for four, four, six, zero, West Miami Street, a temporary use, we have someone to speak on that?
I believe it may be online.
Yes. Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Richard Tapper, I'm the regional state manager for Phantom Fireworks. I appreciate you guys letting me come on Zoom there, I'm just taking care of my ninety-eight-year-old mother-in-law, so it's hard for me to drive all that way right now. But, uh, last year we were at Eclipse Bar doing our fireworks tent and we're asking to go back again this season for another season at Eclipse Bar. We didn't have any problems whatsoever, uh, the state officials, so we did a good job. Uh, the owner of the bar said we did alright with cleanup and everything, we're asking to, uh, come back again for this season.
Okay, I understand that you are asking for a five-year permit this time?
No, I didn't, I didn't put anything down, I, I'm not asking for five now, if we can do another, if we do after this year, if we can do an extension of a couple of years, two or three years, that would be fine, no, not five.
Mr. Chair, uh, we, we happen to have met with some prospective purchasers of that property today, so I, I think we should inquire of the applicant, uh, well, you know, what, what that would do to their request if the property was sold.
Uh, did you hear the question, sir?
Yeah, if the property was sold, yes, and, and I know it is up for sale, I talked with the other owner right now, if it is, and if, uh, the new owner signed a lease with us, then we would continue ongoing, if the new owners didn't want to sign a lease, then, um, we would just be out of our location.
Okay, does that answer your question, or?
Well, I think it would, i- i- if you were inclined to grant this, it would have to be contingent bond, property owner approval at the time of the transaction, uh, or at the time of the set, you know, the sale, it may not be the same as it is today.
Okay.
Yeah. A- a- and if it wasn't sold, we'd get a new lease, new permission slip, we, we'd have all new paperwork.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, questions?
But, they're, uh, just staff, there weren't, there weren't any issues with this last year as far as we know?
No, there wasn't any issues, um, generally people do a five-year renewal, so I think if he's asking for a one and it's for sale, we should just do a one.
Okay.
Is the recommendation, I guess.
Okay.
Or at least, at least two years, so this way I don't have to come back next year, be the following year, if we can do that, come back in two years for some reason.
You could request.
I would suggest that the one year is probably best in this circumstance, since we know the property's for sale.
Okay, that's fine.
It's gonna, if, if the property sells, the whole layout of the site's gonna change, and so it wouldn't be applicable anymore, uh, what we've reviewed today.
And everything stays the same, he can request a multi-year next year?
Yep, that's fine, okay, perfect.
Yeah, we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah. Uh, anyone in the audience to speak on this? Okay. Uh, we have some items to look at for a temporary use. We'll get down through these. Temporary use permit is compatible with the various provisions of this chapter. Uh, this land that they're requesting is zoned, uh, commercial property and they're using it for a temporary use of retail sales, so would find yes for that. Number two, temporary use is reasonable use of land compatible with the general plan, land use designation and zoning classification. Once again, it's commercial use being used for retail, so fine for number two. Number three, temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of land or the orderly development of land in immediate vicinity. Uh, there's plenty of parking staff, uh, temporary use, once again, last year there were no issues with that, so I'll find yes for three. Number four, temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent, uh, uses, building or other structures. Uh, once again, this is all contained right on the property, right on the parking lot there, don't see any issue with that. Number five, temporary use will not endanger public health, safety or general welfare. Uh, once again, I believe from the paperwork we have, all the requirements and fire department and state fire license or fireworks license and all that have been met. Uh, so don't see any issue with number five. Number six, the provision for adequate traffic, access, circulation, all street parking, pedestrian safety, been provided and maintained during the operation, the use of the activity. Uh, once again, the drawings are presented, uh, positioning, the same as last year, there were no problems, plenty of room there to park and, uh, no issue where the tent was at. And finally, number seven, the grant, the temporary use permit made subject to those conditions necessary to preserve the general welfare, the individual welfare of any particular applicant. Uh, permit, if granted, would, uh, made conditional, once again, upon all the requirements for the state fire license, fireworks license, and the hours that they have requested, the days they've requested and locations, those are all specified and would be expected to be met. Based on that, I find an affirmative for all those, unless there's any question from anybody? If there's no question, uh, entertain a motion, please?
Actually, I do have a question, sorry. In the resolution, the dates in the first and the last paragraphs don't match, could we just pin down the dates?
Can you be specific on the dates, Jeremy?
Yeah, so this is the report from last year, usually I just update them, so that says twenty-three, so that should say twenty-four. Um, but it should say instead of twenty-eight, twenty-five, we're doing one year and not for five years.
So the, when does it end? So the dates in the resolution should be?
The dates in the resolution should be June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four to July fourth, twenty-twenty-four?
Do you see what I'm looking at in the last paragraph, though? Those are completely different.
Yeah, because those are supposed to be a five-year renewal.
Right, but does it end on the fourth, or does it end the week after?
Okay, 'cause usually, we usually, it's, it's been a, a week later for a sale.
Oh, yes, yeah, I see, um, yeah, it should be the thirteenth, 'cause usually we give them a week to take everything down.
Okay, so starting on the twenty-second or the fifteenth?
Whatever.
Um, sir, from Phantom, uh, when are you starting your sale?
Yeah, our lease starts that day, our, our first selling date will be like the twenty-second of June. We start setting up around the fifteenth, 'cause we have to be inspected again by you, your local and by the state fire marshal before we open up.
Then why don't we say the fourteenth, June?
To the... And when do you stop selling, sir?
My fourth is our last day, we clean up on the fifth and sixth and, um, our trucks start coming around over the seventh and eighth to pick up everything.
So why don't we say like to the tenth?
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
So if we say in total, we were talking June fourteenth to July tenth, does that sound like?
Twenty-two, four, yeah.
Twenty-two, four, yes.
And the same thing changes to the last paragraph of the, uh, yes, of the resolution.
Okay. Now we can entertain a motion?
Thank you.
I would move, uh, approval of the request for one year and adoption of the resolution with the dates as noted and also with the understanding that, uh, I guess we're just doing this for one year, so we don't need a contingent issue then for the property sale.
Right.
I support.
Alright. Uh... Do have one question. On the proper sale, do we need to put, is this something that's imminent possibly, or are we good for the year here, or?
It's gonna come before planning commission, before that happens, I would not say imminent. If before, are you, you're saying before?
July.
Yeah. Possibly, but it would not be developed in that timeframe.
So we're probably okay, not even mention.
You're probably okay for now. Okay. If it does change, if you wanna say if it changes hands, they need to reapply before that date.
Okay, as part, as part of the motion, I realize the motion's already been seconded, Mr. Miller, but, uh, if you would entertain an amendment to the motion to, with the contingency that if the property changes hands between now and July, that the, uh, applicant
Needs to provide a...
Needs to provide written, uh, contract.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Jer, Jeremiah, is that okay? Okay.
Alright, so now we have a motion with the, uh, that little addition on to it, and we have support of that motion with the addition?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, questions on the motion? So any no questions, uh, roll call vote?
Chikovitz?
Yes.
Bealy?
Support.
Miller?
Yes.
Koleski?
Support.
Berthold?
Yes, support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Uh, you're welcome, sir. My next paperwork here. Next item on the agenda for fifteen forty-nine West Beecher, dimensional variance, we have someone to speak to that? Hey, if you introduce yourself and just kinda give us a overview of what you're asking for?
Yeah, so my name's Travis Tisher, I'm a senior project manager with, uh, the Green Group. We are doing a solar project at the plastic Omnium plant. Um, it's a two-point-five megawatt, uh, DC solar, um, project right now. If we can get a variance on some of the setback requirements, we could increase the, um, percentage of the solar production by about fifteen percent at a bare minimum. Um, and we would just be requesting a thirty-foot, uh, relief from the east, um, project, property, property line and a ten-foot, uh, from the south, uh, property line.
Okay. Commissioners, questions?
What percentage, can you have a rough idea of what percentage the ground cover is?
Um, I think it's fifty-five percent right now.
For the whole plot?
Yeah, well, sorry, it's less than that, it's, uh, I think it's thirty percent or something like that for the whole plot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to review, what are the setback requirements?
The east side that he's talking about is forty feet, the south side is fifty, so they want to, uh, they look at.
Thirty feet variance on the east side, ten foot on the south side.
Yes, so that would be how much they're requesting to encroach into it.
Into the setback requirement.
Mm-hmm. And on the page before the resolution, you can see there, um, proposed layout with a ten-yard, ten-foot side yard setback, retention pond in the center of that, which is blocking them, and a forty-foot, um, they have it as front yard, but that's rear yard, um, on their south side. So they would be encroaching ten feet into that and thirty feet on the east side.
One of the things we look at for variances is that, uh, is there some reason you cannot meet the requirement? So that is my question to you is, why are you not able to meet the requirements?
Because of the retention pond in the center of that area, um, we are struggling to meet the power requirements that we're contracting with, uh, plastic Omnium.
Or, I mean, to meet the requirements, you could simply not have quite as big a grid.
Um, can you repeat that, the?
If, if you dropped off a couple, if you eliminated a couple of rows of panels, you could meet the requirements.
No, well, um, there, we're trying to hit a certain percentage of power for them, um, to help them out with their production. And it's in that area, we, we looked at it and it's, um, basically an open area with a slight slope to the side for drainage, and we can go kinda up to that, um, without having any issues.
So we, we did meet with this applicant administratively and, uh, one of the things we talked about a- at that meeting was the uniqueness of the property and, and suggested that they point out to you some of the unique features of the property, basically that there's a railroad track as opposed to a neighbor on the south where the rear yard setback would be, uh, hoping to protect, um, you know, neighboring properties from encroachment and, uh, likewise, there's, uh, heavy industrial use, uh, to the east, which at least in staff's view, we didn't feel like would be disadvantaged by the proximity of this particular use to the property line, given that this is not an active use, it's a passive use of the property.
Commissioners, questions? Anyone in the audience on this, if they're variant request? Anyone online? Okay, I guess we're back to us. Find my right paperwork here again, excuse me a second. For a variance, we have, uh, for dimensional variance, we have some items to go down through. And, uh, we need to find affirmative on all these items before we could consider, uh, granting a variance. We'll go through these one at a time. Their practical difficulties unnecessary hardship with preventing carrying out the strict letter of this ordinance. These hardships or difficulties shall not be deemed economic, but should be evaluated in terms of use of a particular parcel of land. And, uh, this particular parcel we're dealing with has this retention pond, which I don't believe they put in, you know, but...
Well, I, I, they put it in, but at the time, they didn't contemplate the passive energy.
And the retention pond is a required, was.
And it was, it was a requirement.
I'd also like to say there's no city storm out there for that either, so it was kind of a necessity at the time.
So we're not gonna fill it in and make more land?
I mean, I hate to say it, you can put that underground, but it's extremely expensive to do that.
So we'll find yes for number one. Number two, the genuine hardship exists because of unique circumstances, physical condition such as narrowness, shallness, shape, topography of the property involved, or to the intended use of the property do not generally apply to other property uses in the same zoning district and shall not be recurrent in nature. Once again, we're talking about the topography of that land, so it does, uh, eliminate some of that for the use that they are requesting, I will find yes for number two. Number three, the hardship or special conditions or circumstances do not result in actions, uh, result from actions of the applicant. Uh, once again, we're talking about this, so we're back to this, uh, stormwater retention pond. Uh, therefore, it was put in because there are no sewer, uh, storm sewer area in that area, so it was not something that the applicant did. So I will, uh, find yes for number three. Number four, the variance will be in harmony with general purpose, the intent of this ordinance will not cause substantial adverse effect upon surrounding property, property values and use and enjoyment of the property in the neighboring neighborhood or districts. Uh, once again, it is an industrial area, uh, and we have, uh, railroad behind, so there doesn't appear there should be any do effect on property owners on either side. Find yes for four. Number five, the grant, this variance will not confer the applicant any special privileges denied by this ordinance or other land, structures or buildings in the same district. Uh, once again, other properties, uh, in this area or any other area could certainly come and apply for a variance and it would be dealt with the same way based on the facts for that particular case, so there's no extra, uh, thing being granted here. Yes for number five. Number six, the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome the inequality inherent to the particular property or mitigate the hardship. What they're requesting and what I'm hearing from the, uh, city in their meetings, what they're requesting is the minimum amount they need to be able to generate the power that they need for this particular location, uh, so I will find yes for number six. And finally, number seven, the variance shall not permit the establishment within a district or any use which is not permitted by right within this district or any use which is special use permit or temporary use permits required. Uh, this is not a use variance, so I would find yes for number seven. Finding yes for all those, I would entertain a motion.
Head mic, um, ask.
I would move that we approve the request for a thirty-foot variance to the east of this property and a ten-foot setback variance on the south side of the property and move the adoption of the resolution that staff has provided.
We have a motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have support. Commissioners, questions on the motion? Hearing no question, roll call vote?
Bealy?
Support.
Miller?
Support.
Koleski?
Support.
Chikovitz?
Support.
Berthold?
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, you have your variances.
Alright, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, old business, I have nothing less than, unless somebody has something? Any future business or any other updates? Alright, uh, we have a section for public comments for zoning board, are there any public comments for the zoning board? Okay, hearing none? I believe we're ready to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Right. Voice vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, planning commission will begin in approximately eight minutes. Thank you all for coming.
Folks, we will call to order the February two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is a roll call.
Yes. Chikovitz?
Present.
Love?
Present.
Leatherby?
Present.
Johnson?
Present.
Watson? Taylor?
Present.
Gauss?
Present.
All commission members are present.
Thank you. Uh, next item is consideration of our minutes from the January meeting. Commissioners, you have copies of those minutes, I presume you've had an opportunity to review them, are there any additions or corrections to the January ninth minutes?
I'll find a comment, um, under approval of minutes, the first paragraph says there were no additions or corrections to the minutes and it says that we approved, um, minutes were approved with that correction. So there was not a correction.
There was not a correction, okay. In that case, unless there are some other corrections, uh, we would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as correct.
So move.
Support.
That was Commissioner Watson and Commissioner Taylor. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. And the next item on our agenda is case number twenty-four oh-three, a proposed, proposed ordinance amendment relative accessory parking and storage. Um, in the way of background, city's current ordinance requires that recreational vehicles and utility vehicles and trailers be stored on the property's rear yard and that such storage comply with all required setbacks and distances from principal structures, that's the current ordinance. In response to complaints from residents about a proliferation of vehicles and their contribution to blight and their negative impact on neighboring properties, the planning commission asked staff prepare a draft of modifications to the ordinance to address these issues. Commissioners, you have copies of that draft. In summary, the draft modifications would continue the requirement that such vehicles be stored in the rear yard and continue to meet requirements for setbacks and distances from principal structures. Additionally, such vehicles would be required to be stored on an improved surface such as asphalt, concrete slab or compacted surface and that there be a curb cut to facilitate the ingress and egress to the rear yard. Further, that such vehicles be limited to a maximum length of twenty-two feet and that such storage be limited to no more than ten percent of the area of the rear yard. Commissioners, as you know, we've received a number of written comments from residents on this matter and commissioners, I believe that you have received copies of that correspondence. I know that many of the people, uh, in the audience are here because of their interest and concern regarding this proposal and we will have opportunity for public comment in a bit. In order to proceed and to perhaps to give some additional context to this matter, and because this is the first meeting where the commission has had uh, a complete copy of this draft ordinance, we will start with a discussion among the planning commissioners. We will take into account those comments we have received either in writing or via the phone and then we will receive comments from the audience. I should point out that any change to a zoning ordinance lies solely with the city, uh, the authority for that lies solely with the city commission and any action taken by the planning commission is strictly in the form of recommendation to the city commission. With that said, commissioners, uh, discussion on this particular matter?
I have prepared something I'd like to say.
Commissioner Watson?
I'd first like to thank all of you for coming out tonight and sharing your feelings on this possible recommendation to the city council. Like Commissioner Jacobit said, this, we do, we are not the end-all-be-all on this, we just make a recommendation to the city council and they can do with it what they choose, whether change it, send it back to us or turn it down outright. Um, many of you are here because one of our city commissioners placed information on your door regarding this issue because you have a camper or a boat or a trailer in your yard, whether it's in compliance or out of compliance. They did not, however, to my knowledge, contact anyone that might be in favor of this ordinance change. Most of you are here because you are not in favor of it, um, I did receive some communication from people that were in favor. There are many residents that do reach out, voice concerns about campers, trailers and boats and yards or driveways. When I look at an issue like this or any issue, I think about how it will affect everyone in our city and not just people on one side of town or the other. I took the time to drive around all of Adrian this past few days and my opinion has changed on the draft ordinance that we have. Some of the new proposed rules would put undue hardship on many people in our community. I feel as if the ordinance does not need to be drastically changed as we have talked about, but updated in small ways. I would like to propose the changes to the current, current ordinance. Change part B, which references camping in your yard, um, say a relative comes over with their camper and they wanna stay for some time, you have to get approval from the police chief. You can stay up to two weeks with that, um, I think we should change part B to read one week with approval from the zoning administrator, remove the police chief from that because he has more things to do than worry about that kind of thing. Um, camper must be in the rear yard with no sewer hook, hookup as it currently reads. Combine section C and D, since they pretty much say the same thing, clarify the setback and lot line rules. Um, if you're going to access your backyard, you need to use a curb cut, whether it's the curb cut for your driveway or you have another one put in. And add a paragraph that says, anyone can park in their dri, in their driveway for up to forty-eight hours to load and unload a camper RV, travel trailer, boat, for a trip, whatever. Um, thank you, you know, currently we are working on a rewrite of all the zoning ordinances in our city, which will take a year, two years, um, but we're trying to get this cleaned up and this is just one thing that did come to our attention that we're trying to rectify, um. As it sits, I really don't feel like we need to change the ordinance, um, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watson, would you, could you quickly summarize what your recommendations were though relative to?
I mean, my recommendation is we change part B. Which states.
That's about the camp, camping.
Yeah, I got it. Part B is the parking of a travel trailer, motorhome, or camper trailer when in use or occupied for a period exceeding twenty-four hours. So if it's parked in your driveway or in your backyard, because grandma and grandpa came with their fifth wheel or their RV. It says currently is expressly prohibited more than twenty-four hours, except that the chief of police may extend a temporary permit. For up to two weeks. And it cannot be hooked up to the sanitary sewer. I would, my recommendation would be, we make that seven days with a zoning administrator's approval. So they would just have to contact Jeremiah. Say, there's going to be a camper in our driveway or our backyard for a week. Done. You know, in advance, not the morning of.
Okay.
Combine paragraph C and D because the way I read them, they pretty much say the same thing.
I think, I think that, I think D was just to make, include utility trailer.
Yeah, so we just need to combine them into one. And add that access to the rear yard must be through a curb cut, whether that's your driveway or. Because going over the curb over and over, as we discussed. The engineers don't like that. Okay, and our, and then add a paragraph that says anyone can park in their driveway for up to forty-eight hours. To load and unload a camper RV. So you pick your camper up Wednesday after work. It's such in your driveway Thursday, you look, you're loading it Wednesday, Thursday night, you leave Friday. You come home, it sits there Monday, Tuesday, it's back to where it's stored.
Okay.
Those are the recommendations I think would make the most sense. You know, I think we were a little. Quick to throw up their length requirements and. Being on a slab or on some sort of improved surface.
Okay.
Driving around town looking for them now, I see there's lots of people that have them in their backyard. They're not bothering anybody. They're not a eyesore, they're not. That's just my feeling.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments, uh, discussion on either the proposed ordinance or Commissioner Watson's. Comments. Commissioner Gauss.
Yes, thank you. Um, for the last couple of weeks since we first discussed this. I've obviously received a lot, number of communications from our constituents. I've also met with several. The majority of the comments that I've gotten. Objecting to this is simply, and we talked about this a little bit at our last meeting. That if we enforce the current code. That that would take care of the problem. It's a lack of enforcement on the current, you know, with our current, current ordinance. And I've looked at that, and I believe that in fact that is the case if we did. Enforce the current ordinance. We would not need to make any changes. Now I say that. Letting people know. That if we vigorously enforce the current ordinance. There will be people, probably some in this room, that are in violation of the current ordinance. And you won't be happy. But we have that ordinance on the books. We don't have to make any changes. We can start enforcing it. And that'll take care of our issues, the city commission's issues. And, but I know that we'll receive complaints when we start doing that. So I just want to throw that out there. I don't think we need to change the ordinance. That's where I stand.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would just. To go along with Commissioner Gauss's comments. If we were to do nothing tonight and the ordinance continues, nobody would get a ticket tomorrow. You would get a notice to correct. I mean, I will personally give you an example. My tenant left the trash can out. And I, as the owner, got the letter in the mail that said you had ten days to rectify the situation. You know, that's the type of thing you will get first. You will not get a, not everybody's going to get a ticket. You're going to get a notice that you're in violation and it needs to be corrected.
Mr. Kelly.
Well, I, I concur with my esteemed colleagues. I, I've, I've also, uh. Driven around and taken. A look at things and, and, uh. I think if we do enforce. It is, as it is right now, I think, um. That's the way to go. Obviously, some of you will be upset if you are in violation, but. I think what we have now, if it's enforced, will be acceptable.
Others. Commissioner Weatherby.
Um, I just, I just agree with the. Watson, thank you. I think you said that very well.
Thank you.
Um, what needed to be done. And I also like your changes that you were suggesting, um, also to. To, and I, and I agree, as Commissioner Gauss and Taylor have said, that it really comes down to an enforcement issue. And I guess that's going to be, um, outside of our control, but, um, certainly a strong suggestion to, um. The folks at City Hall that, um, something needs to be done about enforcement. Thank you.
Additional comment here. I think one of the things we don't know. At least I don't have that data is. How many complaints does the city have? Uh, for violations with what we're talking about. And it may be that there are very few complaints. I know in my neighborhood, there are a couple of instances, but, um. I don't know, we, we, we may not have as many complaints as we, we think we might have.
I do. Agree that there does need to be some change. Uh, I think the current ordinance lacks things and is outdated in mentioning the chief of police doing things. Like Commissioner Watson says, he has more important things to do. And so I, I do think it needs an update, but I think it needs an update and tweaking and not. Maybe this completely overzealous rewrite that we were thinking before.
Mr. Johnson, every, ever, everyone else has weighed in but you.
Well, I stand with the rest of the, the, uh, planning commission as far as. The, um, I do agree with the, the tweaks and, and cleanup of the, of the outdated, uh, current ordinance. And think that maybe the first step. Is the, uh, stepping up the enforcement and see where that takes us. And if that. Um, results in subsequent changes, then we address it definitely.
Would we be open to the suggestion that since the entire ordinance is up for updating and review? That rather than even bother to tweak, tweak this at this time, that we.
Make it part of a rewrite.
Make part, make part of, make that part of the rewrite.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
No. Exactly. Well, I was going to ask that question, but yeah.
No, we've not gotten that far yet.
Okay.
That makes sense.
I get the impression, and commissioners. Speak up if I'm misstating where we are with this, that there is a consensus for leaving this as it is. For the time being.
I concur. I mean, I, yeah, if we're doing the rewrite, it might as well be part of the rewrite. Which will come up in a. Year or so.
A year or so.
Which we are act, just so everybody knows, we're actively in the process of. Literally going through line by line, section by section, very meticulous nitpicking of. Things and changes and making things kosher and.
Okay.
Get rid of some of the obsolete.
Yes.
Very good. To the audience, oh, yes.
And, and to the point of the zoning rewrite that we're doing, and this is for every zoning ordinance that we have in the city. Once again, we will be discussing that. We'll discuss it as, as a group here at the planning commission and a recommendation to the city commission. And again, the city commission will have the final say on any ordinance changes. You know, and when we're doing a complete rewrite, we will look at every single section of that zoning ordinance. And make decisions. So when we get that, and it's probably still nine to twelve months away. You know, that'll be the process then. And obviously, we will be looking at this ordinance and, and the rest of them as well.
Thank you. As I said, I get the impression, and we haven't taken any formal action on this, but I get the impression from the, my fellow commissioners that, uh. Our, our intent is not to take any action on this. Uh, in fact, to leave it as, as it sits for the time being. With that said, it is still a public hearing. And if there's anyone that wishes to comment, this would be the opportunity for that. If you're coming forward, please step to the microphone and identify yourself and very briefly tell us what it is that you'd like to say.
My name is James Trow. I've lived in Adrian since two thousand and six. You, sir, you mentioned a tenant. That means you're a landlord. I walk out my door. I gotta run over here. I gotta run over here, a rental across from me. Leave me alone. That's my camper. It's in my driveway on asphalt. I have a dump trailer. It's in my driveway. You got a problem? Here's something for. Zoning and planning or whatever. There's a trailer that sits on Division Street at the corner of Michigan, on Michigan, at the corner of Division. It's been sitting there for two months. The plows have gone around it. It hasn't been moved. You go down Locust in Toledo, on Locust, there's two trailers that sit out in the street. You talk about enforcing, do something about it. Twenty-four, seven, this stuff sits out there. Leave us alone. Property owners, we're going to get pissed. You said it last time. If they can afford to play, they can afford to pay for storage. Do you want a storage unit? Do you know somebody that does? Are you related to somebody? I work hard. I work seventy hours a week. I pay for my stuff. I paid for my property. Seven years, nine months took me to pay off my house. Now I got a camper. Now I enjoy myself. I'm not. Going to sit by and let something I work for be told that I have to go pay extra. So when you guys go to the city council, when you guys rewrite or decide what you're going to do, why don't you let them know? You got a room full of people that are pissed. I'm on the verge of selling my property. No, hold on.
Hey, no.
Hold on. I'm on the verge of selling my property in the city of Adrian and moving out. And I will, I will sell it for less.
One moment, folks, if there's comments to be made, you need to come up to the microphone and make them. We don't take comments from out in the audience, okay?
I'm here.
I, I, I know, and that's why.
You are.
You know, and I'm very aggravated. Like I said, I've worked my, pardon my language, my ass off. To do this. To have somebody, you know, to find out, and the worst part about it is I found out on Facebook. I wasn't notified. There wasn't anything with my water bill telling me that you guys are going to start changing ordinances around. Half these people, I guarantee you, I sat in a passenger seat of the truck that I work in, because I was training somebody today. I sat there and I spent half the day. And I'm pretty sure half these people saw my comments. I was letting them know, things that I found, things I heard, and I've heard all that in the last week and a half. You know, when somebody comes to me and says, hey, you got a camper in your yard, did you know that this is what they're doing? If it's over twenty-two foot, you're going to have to get it out of here. So when you guys talk about length, the average camper is twenty-eight foot.
Well, as, as we said, we aren't taking any action.
I understand that.
We're not taking any action.
I just want to make it sure that everybody's clear. When you guys do decide to try to do something like that, there is going to be backlash. You know, because I'm tired, I'm tired, I'm tired of it. I got, like I said, rentals here, rental in front of me, walk out my back door, it's all rentals.
Okay.
I got a house right next to me. I live at five eleven East Mommy Street. Mister Joe, or one of the Joe, or one of the Browns owns the house right next to me. The porch is about falling off. Why isn't that being taken care of?
I need to let you know that we have a three minute.
Well, if that's my three minutes, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. We, we need a name and an address, please.
Melissa Jacobs, State Street. So my issue is, why are we going to try and start enforcing an ordinance?
The address is part of.
Camper. When I have a neighbor across the street that has a toilet sitting outside for the last year. I have another neighbor on the same street that has three cars up on jacks in their backyard. Their fence is falling down, their porch is falling down. The last snowfall, I think there's a requirement that people need to shovel their sidewalks. Not one of my neighbors shoveled the sidewalks. I personally took a snow thrower all the way down just so I could walk to the park with my dogs. So I think when you talk about wanting to enforce ordinances, we need to think about what's really important to the city of Adrian. Because I don't think my camper that is sitting in the back of my yard on the property, on the asphalt. Is as important as a neighbor that has a toilet sitting there for a year.
Thank you.
Bob Benke, two five six Ironwood Drive, also known as the city commissioner that handed out flyers to. Share this information so that those impacted by, uh, these potential changes had an opportunity to come and voice concerns at this public hearing. So thank you for coming out tonight. My concern is that, um, when I moved to Adrian ten years ago. Um, I owned a motorhome and I pulled that motorhome up next to my house. Right in the exact same spot that, um, the previous owner had a trailer. And it's been there for ten years. I've improved it with, uh, putting an asphalt pad underneath it. And, uh, for ten years, I've, uh, never had enforcement. I've never had a complaint. I've landscaped around it. So now, uh, there's bushes that help, uh, hide that from, uh, my neighbors and so forth. Uh, except I'm in violation because it's parked, uh, next to my house, not in the rear of my house. And I think of the people that, uh, I've interacted with and talked to that were home when I gave out the flyers. Or the yards that I looked at, and there's a number of houses. I think of my neighbor who made dramatic improvements to their property and now parks, uh, his trailer next to that with a slab. He moved in from the township. His relatives moved in down the street from the township. These are the people that we want in the city of Adrian, property owners that take pride in their homes. And unfortunately, my, uh, trailer's in violation. And I can solve that by one of two ways. I can cut all the trees down and bushes where I've landscaped, and I can park my trailer in the middle of my backyard. And I'm sure my neighbors will love that site, and I'm sure that will probably bring more complaints. Than where it is nicely parked next to my home. The other concern that I have is while we say that we're not going to make any changes, and that kind of reduces the tone of. Length and so forth like that, as, as was mentioned by the, um, individuals up here is that. That still leads to enforcement of anyone who has a trailer in front of their house. Anyone who has a trailer, um, next to their house currently, and, um, anyone who would not be in compliance to that. And I leave you with this quote from, um. City Administrator Elliot on July seventh, where he said, after he visited my neighborhood and he said, we sound, found some minor zoning ordinances. Violations related to utility and recreational equipment. None of these rise to a level of enforcement. As you can imagine, it would bring blight remediation program into discredit. If we were to bring enforcement actions against the owners of neatly kept homes. Based upon technical violations of our zorden, or zoning ordinance. In order to maintain credibility, we must focus on serious blight issues. Before taking into consideration action on anything like this. So therefore, I say, um, we have a number of people here that would like to maintain parking. Their trailer in the side of their house or in their driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, I should, I should say that, you know, the planning commission takes your comments very seriously. Uh, and particularly, I, I'm personally particularly, uh, uh. Sensitive to the lady who commented about other issues in a. That are more egregious than recreational vehicles. I would encourage you to report those to the city.
Come to their city commission meetings.
And, and.
Point it out.
Report them to the city staff or come to the city commission meetings and point, and point them out there.
I, I, just, I would like to absolutely agree with her. Yeah, like this is a medial enforcement issue. There are much bigger things that need to be taken care of.
Yeah.
I completely agree. But we were charged with this from the city administrator and the city commission and. We can't. That is not our privy to take care of.
Right.
Cars on jacks, crashing yards, toilets in backyards, that's.
I would also, I would also like then to say, in the interest of time, uh, and like I said, we, we take your comments very seriously. We don't, any action, and, and we probably aren't taking any action on this. In fact, I could almost assure you, we're taking no action on this. We, we base though what we, what we do not on, uh, uh. This is not a referendum, you know, and so the number, having thirty people come up here and tell us the same thing doesn't, isn't going to change our mind. So if you have new information you'd like to provide to us on that topic, that's great. Otherwise. Please don't, okay?
I'm gonna anyway.
Okay.
You have a right to.
My name's John Price. You want to know where I live? I live in Rolling Meadows. That's all you need to know. You'll find it. You used words blight. You used words blight, cleanup. Maybe that's what we should be talking about instead of people that work, wanna go camping, can't pay ten dollars a foot for a thirty-foot trailer. You guys got three hundred dollars? Pay to play? Boy, I'm glad I wasn't here for that meeting. I'm retired military and I retired out of the Department of Justice. This is insane. Working people.
Sir.
My name is Robert Duke. I live at three sixty-four April Lane. I agree with everything that's been said to you guys tonight. The other thing that I'm concerned with is some of you folks in particular. I think you need to read your own bylaws that you're supposed to operate under. Because I've listened to the last meetings where you've talked about this subject. I've heard what I want, what my neighbor wants. Heard Mr. Taylor mention because his HOA rules changed. He wants this stuff changed. You're not supposed to be doing stuff that's personal. You're supposed to represent the city of Adrian. I think you've noticed the city of Adrian's taken note of you all by the people that are here in this room and by you changing your tone. I think it's the only reason you change your tone is the outcry. Not because you had some epiphany that you're overstepping. You guys were gonna overstep. You wanna overstep. Well, there's more to Adrian than the west side in the hoity-toity neighborhoods you guys live in. We've taken note.
Keith Miller, one thousand and three Chestnut Street. On the corner of Chestnut and Crosbyville, there's a house that's been there for over a year, year and a half, almost two years condemned. The owner has not did any work to it. Nobody's touched it, yet it still sits there condemned. It should have been torn down twenty years ago, but the building inspectors back then, and the future one, the present one, the past one, whatever, nobody ever wanted to actually look at that, and it was always a rental. I don't know why the, the town, the, the city didn't take heed and look at that property. It's, it's junk. Also, I have a trailer in my backyard and I have curb access to it. But if you guys want somebody to cut a curb down to put access in your backyard, who's paying for that? That doesn't come cheap. And the taxpayers already paid for that curb if I ain't mistaken, plus the gutter and the sidewalk and everything else. So why do we need to put in a curb entrance if we've already paid for that curb? Okay? And another thing, I don't know who can help me on this, but I got like twenty raccoons that live in the storm drain on the corner of Crosbyville and Bristol. And I've asked, I've called, they told me to call the county. I called the county. The county told me to call a pest catcher. And then I have to pay for it. They're not mine, but they come running down my sidewalk every morning on their way home, and they run up the sidewalk across the street every night. So I don't know. I think the city had to do something because it's in their storm drain. Thank you.
Folks, we'll take one or two more comments, and we, because we've got some other agenda items this evening.
Hello, my name is Paul Wasneski. I live on Mommy Court. I've been on Mommy Court for forty-plus years. I've stored a trailer in my yard for thirty-plus years in the same location that it has been, it still is. It's not in the back behind my house because it does not get behind my house. I cannot get back there. It sits along in an empty lot alongside my house because I have three lots. Uh, no one has ever complained to me about it. I take it in and out as needed. I put it there in the winter time. During the summer, it's in and out of my driveway every week or two. Sometimes I have cleaning to do. Sometimes I have repairs to do. So it takes longer than what you're thinking of proposal. I guess I don't see the reason for this when no one's complaining about it, and it certainly is not causing blight in my area. You're welcome to drive by anytime to look at it. It's twelve Mommy Court. And you can see my trailer there. It is covered. It is almost well-hidden where it's at. So I don't agree with anything that's going on as far as this ordinance change is concerned.
Thank you.
Including the length of the trailer.
Thank you.
Whether it's five foot, twenty foot, or forty foot.
Understood. One more.
Hi, my name is Guy Smith. My address is on record at the city hall, so you can look that up. Last meeting you guys spoke about, I heard the comments of we want it to be more like Ann Arbor. Their residents want it to be more like Ann Arbor. I'd like to know who in this audience wants it to be more like Ann Arbor, because if that was the case, I'm pretty sure we'd be living there. We don't want it to be like, more like Ann Arbor. We do want ordinance enforcement. We do want people to actually enforce these ordinances in the fact that let's clean our, our town up, clean the city, let's work on the crime that we have in our city. Let's work on those issues, not so much the things that really are just, you know, not really that feasible to even worry about right now. We got other issues in our town. The pandemic hit us hard as a city. We've had a lot of issues that we've had to deal with. We have people that don't wanna work in our town. We have, you know, it's hard to get law enforcement to come work for us. Maybe we need to be more competitive. I'm not blaming you guys for what's going on. You guys have this put on your laps, and that's what you have to do. But at the same time, you have to understand that, you know, if we're running a planning commission and working on ordinances, why work on ordinances if they're not enforced? You know, it, it doesn't matter if it's a RV or anything else you guys are gonna work on. If we don't have the enforcement to put that down, what's the point at that point? You know, we really need to work together as a city and actually make sure that we're enforcing those ordinances that we do put in place and work on the issues as a community to say, this is really not really worth our time as a city. It's a waste of our time. The ordinance is already there. We can work with it. We can deal with it. We can change it later. Let's worry about the bigger issues first and work on those ordinances first and work on ordinance enforcement and getting people to actually do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacob, just wanna call something to attention and I'll.
I was gonna ask if there's any more comments.
Well, the question really becomes, and I think it's a question for our city administrator. It's my understanding that the Open Meetings Act prevents us from limiting public comment. So saying that you're only gonna take one or two more, that anybody who wants to speak tonight, we need to be.
Does anybody answer, does anybody, anybody? Yes, I do. Michael Garcia, I've lived here since the early seventies.
Five twenty-nine St. Joseph Street. Come on over.
Okay.
Stop by. Everybody, come on over. I have a camper, just like everybody else in this room probably does too. Uh, I don't consider my camper to be a blightite, a, a nuisance or anything like that. It's, it's maintained, it's titled, it's even insured. And I have a concrete slab underneath it, and it sits next to my garage. Doesn't sit there all the time. I actually do keep it at a storage facility through the winter time. I don't feel that somebody's RV or small utility trailer should be considered blight unless it, it is truly decrepit. You know, there are some trailers in this, around this area that you look at them. They're damaged. They're just sitting there, and you can tell that they've been there for a while because they're just slowly sinking. I feel that it should not be, the term blight should not be used for personal property, especially that type of an item like an RV trailer or a utility trailer that you use to haul the branches, to haul the leaves that fall in our yards. We clean our yards up. We take them to the landfill. We take them to the recycling composting area. As my opinion is, is that the term, the length that you're saying that we can only leave our trailers in our driveway, that's way too short. I mean, there's times that I've had my trailer sitting in my driveway for a month and just working on it, tinkering with it and stuff like that. Just to haul it back and forth to my storage lot doesn't make sense to me, so I do that. So basically what I'm saying is I feel that in this right here, it basically makes a comment that you're looking at our personal property as blight. It should be looked at. If it is, it is, but not everything is blight. So, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Anyone else?
My name's Carl Yoder. I live on St. Joseph Street.
And Mr. Yoder, I think just, I think we got a copy of your email, I think.
Yep, yep.
That was you, right?
Okay. Probably.
Yeah.
So anyways, I, I, I do work on RVs for a living. So when you buy an RV, insure it, first question to ask, where do you store it? If you store it at home, your insurance is cheaper than at a storage unit. It's a simple fact. It's at your house. You see it all the time. Storage unit, you don't see it. There's more break-ins at a storage unit than on your own property. And like he just said, he lives on St. Joseph. I've worked on his trailer before. And you go by it, you don't really notice it. And same way with Bill and Wando over there. They got a trailer. You don't see it. But it's just one of those things everyone wants to enjoy themselves. Why not? Another thing, I mean, when people have their trailer at home, I don't know the best way to say it. They, they can do whatever they want with it. You know, if they got a little bit of work to do on it, clean it, whatever, at a storage unit, you can't do none of that. So, and like me, we go camping every weekend. So your two, your forty-eight hour period, my trailer would be sitting in my driveway all, all the time. Because I mean, when I get home, I come home Sunday night, Monday, around there. So it's for two days while we unload it, two days load it back up, then I'm gone again. So, I mean, I don't know how that would work with going camping every weekend. So, I mean, just if you do, you know, change it, I mean, there, there's a lot more expense to people that have trailers if we put them in storage units. And we're talking a lot, you know, a lot more money. So I mean, that's basically it. But yeah. I mean, a lot of trailers, I don't notice them when they're in the yards. Maybe I'm just oblivious to it because I work on them all the time. So yeah. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with trailers in the yards. To me, sometimes it adds to the house.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I live at nine one one Bristol Street. And my name's Jennifer Suddler.
Thank you.
I have a big camper in my driveway, and apparently I'm in violation. I didn't know it. Um, I'd just like to say, I live on a fixed income. I'm disabled. I have five kids. We have a camper. That's about all we can afford to do. You guys make us have to take it to a storage unit. I can't afford to camp anymore. My kids lose out. You know, there's other things that you guys gotta think about. You know, um, we can't afford storage units, hundreds of dollars a month. I could barely afford the camper. So just, you know, when considering stuff like that, try to consider the little people. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, I, I, as I said before, your comments will be taken into serious consideration. I very much appreciate the information you've provided. And unless there's, unless there's some other comments on this particular topic, we will move on, on our agenda. Thank you all very much. Do we need to take action on that particular matter?
Well, it was scheduled for a public hearing, so.
We've done.
Yeah, and you've done that, so. You you could post, I, I, well, I, I think this is gonna come up with the other item as well.
Yeah.
You know, that's probably the right action because we don't intend to necessarily bring it back
No.
anytime soon. Um, is to postpone further action on that.
Can you just table it indefinitely?
Well, I, I think the better term is postpone further action on it. Yeah, I would make that motion and I, I can't make it.
I'll make a motion we postpone.
Support.
Action on this. Action on the word trailer ordinance.
Okay, is there support for that motion?
Support.
Any discussion on the motion? It's, I, I don't think there's discussion. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Neapol. Very well. Next item on our agenda is also a proposed ordinance amendment regarding chickens in the educational research and office districts. This change was proposed by students in a class at CNIH University. And the planning commission discussed them over the course of two or three meetings. The rationale, maybe we'll just wait for the for the, some of the crowd to dissipate. Okay, the change that we, we heard was proposed by students in a class at CNIH University. The planning commission discussed with them over the course of two or three meetings, the rationale for the request, and what restrictions would be appropriate. Their proposal was to use the fowl for the purpose of controlling invasive insects in the Dominican Sisters permaculture garden. Having asked staff to draft an appropriate ordinance, it was subsequently brought to our attention that the students engaged in this project with, the students engaged in this project without the knowledge or permission of the Dominican Sisters. And you've received, commissioners received a copy of the correspondence from the Dominicans. As mentioned in this prior hearing, prior case, any change to the ordinance is a recommendation to the city commission. But given that the property owner in this case, and unbeknownst to us at the time, had no interest in pursuing this change, brings the entire issue in question. And my first inclination is to let this matter drop in a similar manner. Um, on the other hand, moving forward with the ordinance does not, would not obligate the Dominicans or any other entity from taking advantage of the ordinance's privileges. And even if the sisters were interested in acting on it, they would still need to, as the way the ordinance is drafted, would still need to apply for a zoning exception permit and would need to comply with the additional stipulations contained in the proposed, proposed ordinance. So planning commission, what is your pleasure on this topic?
Postponement. I don't, I mean.
I don't think we need to consider this any further.
Okay.
Agreed. So similar to the last item, it is noticed as a public hearing. So if anybody is here to address that particular topic, we should hear from them.
I just wanted to get a sense of the body before we move forward with it.
I, I do have a question. If, if we considered that this was a good proposal for the entire ERO, um, why is it not still a good proposal for the entire ERO?
I guess as a matter of process, even if it was that any university, whether either colleges, Illinois Christian, whomever, wanted to take advantage, they could come and look for approval. So there's really nobody asking for it any further. I mean, just, just to say that, yeah, we would allow chickens in the ERO doesn't mean anybody can have it without coming in and, and getting approval.
Right.
Is that not correct?
That was the point. That was the point. Exactly.
Well, and also the particular circumstance that we were talking about, you know, all the discussions that we had about how it could be beneficial were related to that specific instance that we had in front of us because the, the students that were presenting it. And now we have some evidence that even in that case, they don't want it. So I guess to answer your question, Commissioner, whether it be, you know, we, we received some more evidence that maybe in the most particular case where we thought it would be useful, the owners of that property don't think it's useful for them.
Additional commissioner discussion on this. Gentlemen, that end of the table? No? Okay. Folks, this is a, in fact, was noticed as a public hearing, and is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission in this particular matter? Once again, sir, your name and your address, and tell us what you'd like to say.
You're already aware of my address. My name is James Troll. Now, LASD has a spot over on Tipton Highway. Agricultural, FFA, four H.
Not in the city.
Oh, oh, will you hear me out?
Yep.
Okay. I believe that the universities, the colleges, the schools, they should get with them and help fund that versus, you know, you tell me I can't have a chicken in my yard. Okay, I'll deal with that. I work with farmers. I know that farmers are the heartbeat of everything. So are truck drivers, just like me. That's what I do for a living. If you guys go through and give special favoritisms to the schools or whatever colleges and not us, you're gonna have more backlash. You know, I think if CN Heights wants to do this, I think that if they wanna do that, they should contact someone outside of the city that doesn't have the ordinance that we have, that we're not allowed to have, you know, raise foul within city limits. To me, that's how I look at it. I don't know if anybody else here does.
This was brought to us for particulars, a very specific purpose in that the students asserted, whether accurately or not,
Okay.
that they had an invasive insect species in the horticulture.
There's invasive species all over Michigan.
Well, neither here nor there, and I'm not in a position to, you know, discuss that. So I'm not, I'm not qualified.
We, we can split hairs on it. I'm just saying that that's, they're, they're all over the, they're all over Illinois County. You can't tell me that the bug that's over here at CN Heights isn't in my backyard, which is, what, ten blocks away?
Thank you.
So.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Hearing none? Again, would, would there be interest in postponing is the, is the correct term? A motion to postpone any action on this? It's support. Motion in support. All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well. There any other business to come before the planning commission this evening? Any further public comments? Ma'am, if you'd come to the podium and give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to say, please.
Um, my name is Linda Cole and I live at 113 West Summit Street. And I just want to know how we find out what is on you guys' agenda. We have a camper, but we didn't know anything about this except for my neighbor saw it on Facebook.
Our, our, our public hearings like this are noticed in the newspaper, in the classified ads in the newspaper. They're also on the city's website.
Okay.
And if it's something that relates specifically to your property, now that in this, in this two cases, they didn't relate to any particular property in particular, you know, and so that, that, that was the notice in the newspaper and on the city's website.
Okay.
If there was an issue that related to your property in particular, you would or your, or your neighbor's property in particular, you would receive a notice in the mail.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Your will. Anybody else?
My name's Tabitha Adney Smith. I will not give my address. However, I don't speak for these people, but from what just hearing and listening to everyone, I just want to point out, you are opening Pandora's box. And my concern is not only for the handicap, but the elderly, when you're trying to make these decisions with, whether they can have a camper or a cargo trailer or where they can park their items, they pay their taxes. And it's not going to be very pretty for anybody. I just want you to notice that and make a point that this is Pandora's box and it's not going to be very nice when you make your decision if they don't like it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Folks, we would entertain a motion for adjournment. Or motion in support. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.